Alright hello, we are live on Twitch, fantastic! Um, tonight we are going to do another study session. Uh, I was thinking about doing some poker tonight, but uh, after a busy weekend, some late nights, just not feeling it tonight. And I'm kinda tired and irritable, so not the best mindset to be playing live poker. So I thought I'd take the opportunity to uh, do a little more studying, a little more practice on Poker Snowy. And just uh, tune in, fine tune my um, my GTO skills. So I've got my trusty little starting hand chart. And uh, I've got some Lindsay Sterling playing in the background, so with that... Let's do some studying. Um... Where's poker still? Here we go. There we are. Okay, so tonight uh, we are going to simulate the 6max Zoom Poker that I was playing. So we're gonna have 6 people at the table. Um, there's rake, the cheapest I can make the blinds is 10 cents, 20 cents, close enough. Uh, blinds 100 big blinds, there are no antis. And the auto rebuy is set to 100%. So anytime I go below my starting stack, it automatically tosses you back up to starting stack, so... Uh, the goal for tonight... Uh, I've got my opening range, opening raising, and 3 betting ranges. Um, down pat, pretty solid, I'm pretty happy with these. Uh, now it's going to be uh, honing in my post-flop skills. So we're going to set... Start this up here. Uh, we're gonna set this to display when we make an error. In the last poker session, uh, we had the live advice always on, so it told us what to do before we even got to make it. Now, I'm gonna be making the calls. And we're gonna let Poker Snowy let me know if the play that I made was incorrect and what the correct play should have been. Um... What else? I think that's about it. Yeah, if I think of anything else, I will uh... I will add it, but uh, for now, um, yeah, let's uh... Let's play some poker. So, opening hand. 6-3, obviously that's fold. 7-3 is gonna be a fold. Ace-Jack, okay, so we've got a under-the-gun raise. Open raise, and then we've got a 3-bet. So, taking a look at my opening chart, ace-jack offsuit, uh, we do not call 3-bets. We would call a pre-flop raise, but 3-bet, especially uh, under the gun +1. Those are 2 very strong hands, probably ace-jack. Even suited would be dominated. I'm gonna fold, see what Poker Snowy says. That's the right move. Uh, 8-7, this might be a decent spot to try to steal the blind, I think. Usually it likes to have suited connectors, but we'll see what happens if we just do a min raise with a uh, connected card. Yeah, it said it was fine. Okay, post-flop, 6-7-8, I've got a gutshot straight. Uh, I was the pre-flop aggressor, so you know what, a continuation bet, just a small one, quarter pot, which is a min bet, might be okay. Uh... Do I continue on the turn? I don't think so, I'm gonna check on the turn. C-bet didn't work. Yeah, I actually should have. Okay, so the gutshot... Also, the big blind's pretty wide too, so they probably don't have a jack for 10. So, when trying to steal the blinds with connectors, even on the turn, saying make a pot-sized bet. Okay. So there's a .57 EV mistake, no, sorry, I checked. So it's a .3 EV mistake. Still a positive EV play. But I probably in the long run would make more money if I bet in this situation. Okay, fair enough. While I whiffed... So do you bluff at this? Seeing the big blind. Called my min raise, he could have 5s, 3s, 6s, he's probably got a pair somewhere along here, so I don't think he's gonna bet, I'm just gonna check. Yeah, there was the bet, he wins the pot. So on the top left here, um... Oh, you can't see it, it's cut off. I have to change that for the next one, it shows me my session's score. So right now, after this hand, I'm gonna be down 80 cents. So I'll keep the update as soon as you can't see it. Nah, no big deal. Okay, ace-3 suited, folded around to me, that's going to be a pot-sized raise. Okay. So now we've got a backdoor, not flush draw, 1 overcard. Backdoor straight, this is a good spot for a c-bet. Okay. Now, where's my T? I really like my hand where it is right now, I've got lots of equity in here, because I've got spade draw, I've got a straight draw, so lots to like in this hand. So I'm gonna make a half-pot continuation bet on the turn. And I take down the pot right there. Uh, ace-9 offsuit from the cutoff, borderline, but um, I'm like a half-pot. Don't forget I'm playing 6-handed, so uh, what would normally be a marginal hand, 9-handed, might be a decent starting hand at 6-handed, so... Definitely get a lot more action in a 6-hand, 6-handed game. Let's get comfy here. There we go. Uh, okay. So not much to improve on here. Uh... Live, I would probably check this, but... Yeah. Okay, a c-bet still is positive EV. A check would be just slightly better. If you are gonna c-bet, it's saying do at least half-pot, I only did quarter pot. Okay. Hmm... I still don't like my hand in this, I'm gonna check. So, a king beats me, and 8 beats me. Now, one would think, if he had a king, when I checked the turn, he would have bet. I don't think he has a king, I don't think he has an 8. So 2 or 5 is going to beat me, that or my ace-high is good, so I'm gonna make a small bet. Really? Okay, there it is, pot-sized bet would have been better. That or chuck. Oh, he had pocket 3s, really? Okay, 6-4, no good. King-5, no good. Jack-4, we will not play this. King-6. The dealer button raise, nope. If these were suited, I made 3-bet just to squeeze him, but... King-6, no. Alright. Under-the-gun raise, a 3-bet with ace-4 suited, not playing. King-10 under the gun. King-10 offsuit, no, that's only played from the cutoff or better. Alright, normally I would call this, but because this is under the gun, representing strong hand, I was gonna go... That was a raise from late position maybe? 9-3, oop. Okay, king-queen suited. Folded around to me in the button, this is a strong hand, we're gonna raise pot. Okay. Checked to me. Okay, plan here. Yeah, half-pot bet, see what he does. I just fold, okay. I was thinking he was gonna 3-bet there, plan what to do, but... 9-5, nope. 5-3, oop. 5-3, no. Uh... Ace-2 offsuit in the big blind, how... Uh, okay, so if this was an open raise by the button, maybe, but being UTG+1... Strong hand, not playing king-6 against him. Okay, king-9, this I can raise. Hmm, yeah. Make a pot-sized bet. Okay, king-9 suited facing a 3-bet. I think we chuck this. Really? King-9 suited. Is a big blind, 3-bet call. I guess it's assuming that he's 3-betting, thinking he's trying to squeeze me, because he's thinking that I'm trying to steal the blind, so in fact I'm not, I actually got a decent hand. Okay, so king-9 suited, button, 3-bet call. Okay. Duly noted. Okay, ace-queen, big blind, is this a call or is this a 3-bet? Ace-queen offsuit. He's in fairly late position, I think this is a 3-bet. Uh, a 3-bet to... Yeah, 3x, yeah. Okay. So I'm gonna miss, but I got a backdoor flush, and I got 2 overcards, so we will make a small continuation bet. Okay, the c-bet, c-bet should be half a pot. Yeah. So quarter pot, checking is best option, but the EV is very close between those 2. Hey, and I won, fantastic. Um, again, if this was the button raising, I might squeeze him, but no. Ace-8, oop. 8-5, definitely not. 10-jack. UTG+1, basically I'd call that. It's like a middle position. Jack-10 off. It's pretty close. Only because I wanna play some flops, I'm going to make a half-pot bet. Uh, still saying it's a decent spot to do that, but I'm gonna practice my post-flop plays, so I might be a little loose with my open range. Uh, what do we got? 9-10-jack-queen, okay, we've got open-ended draw. 2. Got 7-8, 9-10-jack, and we've got 9-10-jack-queen-king. Oh wow, we've got lots going on here. Definitely calling... I wonder if you re-raise in this spot, no, I would re-raise on the turn. Okay, now we got a bunch of outs, because a king finishes our straight. And then 8 finishes our straight. Alright, it was checked to me. Um... If I fire at the... No, I'm gonna fire now, I'm gonna bet, maybe take down the pot, and if I miss the river, do you bluff at it? Take a shot at the pot right here, let's go pot-sized bet, see what happens. Perfect, took it down right there. Okay, 3-9, no, hang on, I need more T. Ah, small blind, trying to pick me off, 3-2, not much you can do about that. Alright, ace-5, this could be used to pick 'em off. Alright, well, I think I should call 100% of the time, but raising is the same EV, so call a raise, that's fine. 2 pair. Okay, but diamond flush draw, straight draw, so we're gonna take a pretty hard stab at this. Which was a 3-quarter pot. I wonder if I can change out the settings? Possibly, um, but I will just change this to... Okay, it's something I should check, but... Again, betting is still very profitable, I don't mind taking down the pot right here, I don't mind at all. So you can't see at the top there, but after 3 to 5 hands played, I am up $2.15 so far. Hmm, ace-5 in the cutoff. This would be a very loose open raise, but again, I wanna see some flops, so yeah. Saying I should have folded, but raising... Folding 0, obviously, raising's only -.01, so still an okay play. Because I wanna see some flops and practice post-flop. Um... Okay, half-pot c-bet then, even though I missed, good chance that Snowy-5 missed as well, yeah. King-10 suited, that's definitely a raise, uh, we'll just do... Okay, a 3-quarter pot would be perfect. Change out the settings anyway. Um... Not loving the flop. But gotta keep c-betting. Think they got an ace. 8's definitely in their range, so I think they're just gonna check it down and give up, yeah. Hmm. Okay, this is a check, yeah. A pot-sized bet, you can have it. What do we got going on here? So we got a under-the-gun... Min raise, and then a 3-bet, ace-10, we don't play 3-bets, no. 9-2, nope. 6-3, no. 8-10, no. Okay, ace-queen off. Even with under-the-gun raise, I still think this is a 3-bet. A 3-bet 3x. Okay, I'm making good plays, this Poker Snowy's not telling me otherwise, so um... Okay, so he opened raised and then called a 3-bet. His range is capped, he definitely doesn't have... Kings or anything like that. Okay, this is a half-pot c-bet, it's a big pot already. Hmm. What would you call a 3-bet with? Oh, shit, he had a check raise. Wow. I don't know what you would do that with. Probably do it with a decent pocket pair. Anyways, I think I'm folding in this spot, I think that's the right call. No, calling is... Although it's not a very profitable call, still. 2 overcards. Okay, noted. Uh, ace-10, it's just a small blind call, that's a definite raise. Uh... Yeah. Yep. Uh... Pocket 3s I don't think we called there, no. Okay, ace-queen again, this is gonna be in lots of practice repeats. Uh, we'll do half-pot, so I'm gonna get some flop action, the practice. Or not? Uh, ace-7, that's not a playable hand, 8-7 suited? Hmm. I think this might be a call in the big blind. It is. Not a great flop, but we'll check to the aggressor. They check, and now, 6-7, I got a gutshot. Do I take a stab at this? Yeah, they checked, they gave up the betting lead, so I will take over the betting lead. Still need to check. Again, petting, petting, petting's still a positive EV play, but check was better. Okay, now I've made middle pair. They don't have a 10, because they checked on the flop and gave up the betting lead. I think that Snowy-1 has a pocket pair like 5s or something. Or even 9s. If they got 9s, they got me beat. I'm gonna make a small bet at this, try to steal it. Yeah, see, both checking and betting, almost the same EV plays. And they did fold, excellent. Okay, king-5 is a steal hand. Steal didn't work, just probably raise a little more for this steal. Uh... Big blind. Uh, they dominate, so I will half-pot c-bet. Still don't like my hand, so I'm gonna check it down. Uh... Okay, I think a small bet would have been just as good. Hmm. Now, do you take a chance of bluffing at this, trying to rep the king-queen? Yeah, it's gonna take a pot-sized bet to do so though. Yeah, with the straight on the board, they can't even call with a pair of aces. Yeah, good bluff. Uh, ace-8 not under the gun, no. Okay, king-queen will be a call or a re-raise? Uh... If it was later position maybe, but not UTG+1, that's a call. Not a terrible flop, but not one I'm very happy with. They were the pre-flop aggressor, PFA, so I will check to them, and they make a pot-sized bet. Think I'm gonna peel one off here, hope for a spade, maybe hope for a jack or an ace. No, I should have folded. Yeah, I gotta go run-a-run-a to try to win this, yeah, I wasn't a good player. Uh-oh. Now we're in trouble, now we can't give up. Look at that! I don't have the nuts. Another chance to see has an ace of spades. So 5-6, so what, 8-9 beats me? Hell, ace, no, I got a flush, what am I talking about here? 3-dzems. Something that beats me is the uh, ace of spades. We'll make a half-pot bet. And he folded. Okay, king-jack, because I'm in the small blind, I'm going to re-raise. Get that big blind out of it, uh, although under the gun, open raise. If he's got a hand like ace-king, even ace-jack, I'm dominated. But I would probably 3-bet this, probably would. Poker Snowy's going, "That's a very bad idea." Yeah, because they raised under the gun, which shows strength. Ooh, yeah, seeing now if he's got ace-king. I'm in a lot of trouble, but I'm gonna assume that he doesn't. Maybe I'm hoping for like queens, jacks, or tens, no, I wouldn't have jacks, queens, might have tens. So I'll half-pot bet. Sticking around. Maybe he's got 2 spades. Okay, I gotta believe him's still good here, so for quarter pot. And I just hope he's got a busted draw somewhere. Ace-king, there it is. Bagger! You what? That's why you don't play the king-jack. Terrible. Alright, well that put us down $8 for the session, so we got some time in back to do. Uh, queen-10 under the gun is not a playable hand. Uh, king-8. A small blind squeeze, possibly, so I'm gonna try to steal it back. Hey, it worked! Nope. Okay, ace-5 suited, uh... Under the gun, I wanna 3-bet him. Yes, I do. Ace-8 in the cutoff. Yeah, give this one a try. We're not calling a 3-bet, no. 3s under the gun, or no? Uh... 9-8, big blind, yeah, sure, it's only 20 more cents, I got decent pot odds, why not? Well, calling's not that bad of an EV play, but I wanna practice my post-flop play, so I made a call. Okay. Backdoor flush. Gutshot straight, that's not what I like. You were the pre-flop aggressor, so I would check to you. Now we're double open-ended, 6 or a jack. So why don't we throw some money in this pot? Hmm. Okay, I think he's got an ace or a 10. Question is, can I bluff and rep a flush? Like that pot size, even bigger than pot, let's go $2. Yeah, try to bluff and say that I have a flush. You've not got nothing, the only way I'm winning this hand is to rebuff. Yes. Yes! Alright, king five, no. Ace ten from the cutoff, sure, my worries, uh, pot size. My caramba, this has happened to me before, ace ten is not a three-bet calling hand. Suited, yes. Unsueded, no. Uh, jack seven from mid, huh... Uh, okay, this is a three-bet spot. Yeah. Okay, I still have to c-bet this. Not a terrible flop, but not one I like, but I do have to c-bet it. At least half-pot, I guess. Hmm! UTG plus one, open raise, call three-bet with white. Ace queen? He definitely has an ace in his hand, so he got me beat, I gotta check this down. Apparently it's saying I should still bet. Even with nothing. I can't call this. Heck no. Interesting. Continue bluffing on the turn. Okay, suited connectors. Open raise, the button, for sure. Yay! Uh, nine, ten. This is just a call. Yeah, because they probably have ace king, ace queen, high pocket pairs, my nine and ten might be live. Hmm! This could be very good for me, if they hit the ace, and I can hit the flush draw. A lot of money's gonna go in this pot. Now, I got some equity with the ten as well. Let's go half-pot bet. Oh. EV's almost identical. And I got my flush. So what beats me? A better flush? Which is possible. That's all that beats me, is a better flush. So if I bet, will a worse flush call, will an ace call? Would two pair call? Two pair would call a quarter-sized bet. Fantastic! Alright, pocket kings, how do we get the most amount of money out of this hand? We've already got an open raise, which could be aces. Doubtful, though. I do not wanna scare them off, so I think a pot-sized bet might be too much. Ooh, wow! I got four bet. So if I five-bet this? Half my stack's going in. It raises you all-in or nothing. Hope he doesn't have aces. Interesting. Saying all-in is a bad move here, because all that's gonna call you is something better. Do they have half-pot raise, or call? Even with kings? Probably because they're under the gun. Oh my god, and they had aces. Well, that one's stunned. Uh, pocket sixes in the dealer button, I think I'm gonna call. Call's the wrong move, that's two hands in a row, I screwed up. Okay, time to give this up. Take it! Alright, now we're down thirty-one dollars for the session. Ay! Now it's my turn. To have aces that run into kings, or kings that run into queens. What is this? Four, five is a pot-sized three-bet? Must be a bluff. Those are bluff cards. Interesting. Okay, fours, with a small blind call, that's gonna be a raise. Uh... Well, you wouldn't have just called on the small blind if you had aces or kings, so... I think a c-bet's gonna be pretty profitable here. Yup. Nope. Jack three, big blind, it's all coming to me. Jack five, no. Jack four, no. Two, three, no. Uh, ace four middle, no. Ace jack under the gun, early position. Small, open raise, but we will not call a three-bet. Now where do we need to? Uh, ace six big blind, versus a UTG plus one raise, uh... No, too many ace tens in his range, absolutely crushed. Three, two... Give it a try. Yeah, poker's always going, "Nope, bad move." Yup. Ah, pair. Thought I might be bluffing, yeah, no, just kidding. Boy lost enough money in that hand, that was a bad move. Twenty cents for the pot odds, two, three, hopefully hit something. Hmm! Nope, don't try to get cheeky in the blinds. Although ace eight suited, that's definitely a raise in the small blind. Okay, six, seven, eight, uh, backdoor flush, one over card. Worth a c-bet, don't you think? Nice. Pocket nines, I'm gonna make an open raise with those. Nice. Pocket fives, uh... Yeah, make a small open raise. Did not hit a set, but big blind did not hit a king either, so we will continue with this. You might have an eight. Oh, yeah, wow, wow. My fives are now dead. I have no chance of winning this one. Wait a minute. What am I beat by? An ace, and a higher pocket pair. And a king. Although you do have a ton of sam's and aces in your range, you can have it. King six suited under the gun? No. Don't get cheeky, fold. Eight, six, no. Yeah, no. Uh, queen ten offsuit, that's a cutoff, maybe, I'll do half-pot. Yeah. Nice. Ace queen is a definite open, uh, yeah, I'll just do half-pot. Okay, if they had ace king, they would have re-raised me, so they don't. I've got the best hand right now, they could be on a straight or a flush draw, so let's half-pot c-bets. Think I should just be checked. I don't know about that, I don't wanna give them a free card when there's a straight and a flush. As you can see here, betting is also a very positive EV play as well. And we will keep betting, keep putting the pressure on, perfect. Okay, pocket eight's the big blind with the under the gun min raise, I'm going to three-bet this. Although UTG raise is pretty strong. This might just be a call. Yup. Under the gun, open raise, even if it's only a min raise, very strong starting hands, ace jacks very possible. Queens, kings, aces. Ooh boy, that really hits, yeah. Twenty cents? Oh, you really wanna keep me around, eh? You definitely got me beat. Yeah, there's the ace. Pocket queens, okay, let's see if we're gonna make some money in this, we won't bet too much, we want some people around for the flop, dang it! Uh, king jack, no. Seven, definitely not. Two, six, no. Queen two, no. Even in the big blind, no. Uh, king eight, for the raise, no. Nine, two, no. Eight, two, no. Oh! Open raise, three-bet. Outta here. See, this is like Zoom Poker, as soon as you fold, you get a new hand. King nine, nope. It's a squeeze. Uh, that really hits the big blind range. I think a c-bet is not a good play here, definitely gonna get called. No. Check for bets. Yeah, that's what I thought. And I got nothing to improve on, I'm getting two over pairs. Three, four, seven, uh, you know, I will peel one more. Yeah, no, I should have folded, okay. Alright, I will fold now. What do we got here? Three... Three, four, five, six, seven, okay, we have a straight on the board. If I lose to an eight? That's all I lose to is an eight. Nice, flip pot. Everyone loves a drop pot. Uh, king jack suited, under the gun is an open raise. Not a three-bet, it's pretty good. Maybe it's not a three-bet call, but... No, on three bets, you don't have to worry about it. Nope. Uh, fours I will open here. But I'm not calling a three-bet. Really, I'm saying I should. Maybe because it's in the big blind? Hmm! I don't know. Is this a call with jack three? Or raise? Well, whenever the small blind tries to steal your big blind, you have to fend pretty wide, okay? Uh, ace five suited versus an under the gun min raise, that's a three-bet. Yup. Thinking this is in the, uh, bluffing range. Curious. Because they're always playing strong hands, ace, king, queens, jacks, and a six-five. You get an ace five, or ace six board, ace six five board, couple of clubs, I'm gonna try this. Yup, that's not. Nope, nope, nope. Now I'm unfolded. Okay, we're gonna do one more orbit around to the dealer button, and then I'm gonna go on a bit of a break. But, uh, not to worry, I have got some highlights for you to watch while I'm taking my pee break. Ten, no. No. This might be a quick orbit. Seven, ten blinds. I'm gonna call, but I don't think it's a call, I'm just curious, I wanna see if it is, I don't think it is, but... Yeah, didn't think so. Although, it's a very happy flop for us. Gut shot. And, uh, we have a flush draw. Pot-sized bet, eh? Saying I should even raise, yeah, with that, yeah, okay, yeah, I agree with that, I should have raised. Saying I should even raise, yeah, with that, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, I agree with that, I should've raised. It's a good card now, queen finishes our straight as well, wow, we got a lot of outs. A two X, hot size bet. Wow. I gotta hit one of my outs before I'm done. I need a eight, I need a queen, or a club. Think I should've raised. Oh, try to win the pot right here. I've noticed that tonight in our training session is that. Even though I don't have a hand, we've got this many outs. Raise, re-raise. We missed it all. I was just checking fold. The whole thing I should've, I should've left. That's a tough spot. Bet their bluffing, but I can't call, I don't even have a bluff catcher. Okay. Lesson learned. Okay, pocket threes I will raise with. Next hand, we will go on break. So, in a sec, here, pause the music, we turn off the microphone, and I'll be right back, enjoy the highlights. Okay, we are back, hopefully you enjoyed the highlights, um. We're gonna do, maybe another thirty minutes of this, um, not feeling the greatest tonight, tired, an upset stomach, so. Uh, I think it's gonna be a short stream tonight, but, uh, just took some ginger pills, helped get that stomach, and then I got some water. Yeah, so currently, we're down almost forty dollars. Uh. I made a few errors, we, our kings ran into aces. We lost, uh, twenty-two dollars there. So, uh. Yeah, not every session's gonna be a winning session. But, we've got some time to make a dent back into this and see if we can get back to par. Alright, let's rip through these hands nice and quick, let's keep going. Uh. Well, yeah, jack nine suited, would, yeah. Not a. Here's my challenge. My issue, you know, you're, you're gonna raise. It is a positive point zero five EV play, so out of a thousand hands, you're gonna win five of them. I guess in those five, you would win enough, I don't know, the EV's so close, you might as well just fold and wait for a better hand, but. I don't know. Alright, ace eight suited, oh, with a three bet, yeah, nope. Eight, seven. That's a squeeze, yep, 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 good. Yeah, I guess when you're six handed, you gotta play hands like jack nine suited, cause the blinds come around so fast. Ace nine offsuit, no. C point oh one, see, like, eh. You'll win. Yes, for every thousand dollars you play in this hand, you're gonna win a thousand and one. Okay. We're on the spot again. So. Last time someone three betted kings, and we were supposed to fold them, I don't know, it's. It takes great discipline to be able to knock down kings. Oop, I didn't mean to call, ah. I meant to raise, oopsies. Oh crap, oh, look at this, oh, wow, wow, wow. Ah, see, this is why I'm not playing real poker tonight. Feeling fine all day, and then, um. Right after dinner, I just didn't. Didn't feel mentally alert. Alright, uh. We were not the pre-flop aggressor, we called by accident, so we're gonna check this over. They got an ace? Ay, 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 chances are known, so we have to call. Oh boy. Ace beats us, now a two beats us. I gotta call. Do you bet here? No. You have to call. Are you kidding? That is disgusting. So my three bet wouldn't work, oh. Oh, we flat music. There we go, bring back some lucky sterling. Alright, we're gonna play up to two hundred and fifty hands, we got one eighty-three right now. Queen ten in the button, that's an open raise. Basically, any Broadway card on the button is an open raise. Or any two Broadway cards, sorry. Suited or not, eight, nine, not under the gun, no. Queen nine. Under the gun, no, no. Queen eight, nope. Now hot size bets. Hmm. Big blind does not have ace queen, they already re-raised me. They don't have ace. Have a six or better, I don't think so. I don't think so, it says I should've checked, yeah, okay. Guess another thing I've learned here too, is if you've got an ace with a back kicker, check to keep the pot small, I thought I should've done that. Can I get a queen to call? I beat a queen. I lose to ace six, ace seven, ace eight, ace nine, six, eight, nine. Think a value bet here might be good. I think I gotta get a queen to call. Get a nine to call, maybe. I mean, both are positive EV plays, that's fine, although. Oh, you know what, I just opened myself to a check raise, bad idea. I unfolded anyways. See, I really gotta work on my post, post flop play, that's where I'm really. Uh, what I will do after, oh, my sister's in here, is that Melissa or are we talking to Natalie tonight? Uh, what do I do here? Ace queen. Hot size raise. No, half pot. Uh, two over cards, that's a c bet for sure. Oh, cause they're on the big blind. And I hit the big blind range, I gotcha, I gotcha, but I folded anyways. Oof. Ah, no. No. Squeeze play, nope. 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 No. Um. It's my sister, okay, hello. Oh. King, queen. Cut off, let's go pot size. Nice. Uh, pocket nines are not under the gun material. Although it's close. Yeah, I'll play with these. Ha, another one. King four, hmm, nope. Queen nine is an O. Seven, eight. Offsuit. Sure. Sure. Nope, that's a fold. Five-two, no thanks. Ace ten will play. I think this is a call. Call or three bets? This is just a call. Hmm. This is another check. I'm gonna bluff at this. Cuz the seven gets the straight. I don't think they've got a seven, and I can make... Let's go, one-point-two-five. See if the bluff works. It did. Wow. Squeeze play. Okay, king hits my range, it does not hit theirs. B-five-two, so we will call whatever I bet. It's maybe another bluff hand, so I might have to block the turn too. I think I should have checked. Ah, take it down. Hmm. I will open very small, yeah. Yeah. Yep, yep, yep. Ah, nine-ten, a fold. Interesting. Ace nine offsuit is a call on the big one. Really? It's fine. Uh... Ace six, I think it's gonna be a three bet, yeah. Perfect. Ace-king, good hand. Just don't figure how much I wanna raise, I still have a lot, yeah. Ah, hope there was some action. Queen, ten offsuit, no, not under the gun, no. Ah, ace three, sure. No, I need at least ace nine, ah crap. Gotta call, got top pair. Now I got top two pair, sorry, not top two, just two pair. I'll keep checking, hopefully they keep betting, thank you. Do I re-raise here? What do they have? Do they have three of a kind? I just think they have an ace, I think they have like ace-king. Ah crap, calling was the best move. Actually, no, calling a third of the pot instead of half pot. Nah, I made it a little, okay, the bet was too big, it's fine. And they fold it, see? Ace-king, that's a definite three bet. Okay, well, we've gone from negative forty dollars down to minus thirty-three, so we've crawled back in the second hour. Uh, I got an open raise there, nope. Yeah, another ace-king, now the hands are coming. Everyone's folding though. Uh... I wasn't playing ace-nine in bid, no. Yeah. Point oh one, it's fine. They're just trying to steal my blind, I'm gonna steal it back. Or not? Ah, crap. Sorry. Sorry.